Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to October twenty first council meeting. Our first item on the agenda is a call to order and arise for the pledge of allegiance. So please rise.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is the reading of our sunshine statement and roll call. This meeting of the Denell Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of October twenty first two thousand twenty four was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January eighth two thousand twenty four and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denell website on October eighteenth two thousand twenty four, on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on October eighteenth two thousand twenty four and has remained continuously posted as the required notice under the statute.
Council President Albertson?
Here.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Sigmund?
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark.
It's good.
Mary Solzio.
Here. Item number three on the agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes of October seventh two thousand twenty four. Can I have a motion or an end a second?
Move it, Rios.
Second, Albertson.
Any comments, additions, or edits to the the meeting minutes as they currently stand? Without hearing any, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance? Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Item number four on the agenda is introduction of ordinances. Tonight we have ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty eight and ordinance repealing Article One entitled Pay to Play of Part One Administrative Legislation of Chapter Ten, Contracts of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Denellen. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
As with all introduced ordinances, there are no discussions, but just for public record, we're repealing our current one because the state statute was amended late last year.
Yes.
And so therefore it is more stringent and the repeal and the repeal of this ordinance states that we're repealing it because we will be following the states pay to play or legislation. So we are still abiding by the law and ethics. It's just we're following the states because their language is more restrictive. So, okay, with that, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
And as with all introduced borough ordinances, you can find that on the borough website or pick up a copy at the Borough Clerk's Office and read it and then come back for public hearing and adoption on November fourth, day before the election. Okay, item number five is the adoption of ordinances. We have twenty twenty four dash twenty seven. Can I have a motion on that? An ordinance to amend and supplement the general legislation of the Borough of Denellen, Chapter two sixty nine. Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Okay, we will open the floor to the public only for twenty twenty four dash twenty seven. And this is in addition, is it the addition of a handicap parking spot, correct?
Just one.
Just one. So we have to amend that by ordinance, just so the public is aware. So if there's no public comment on twenty twenty four dash twenty seven, we'll close it to the public. Mayor and council, any discussion on this ordinance before roll call?
Yes, I do have some questions. I saw the location for the details on the location for in front of the Methodist Church and Presbyterian Church, and that all made sense. But then I just wanted a little more information about the locations two forty Prospect, one forty six Pulaski, and five sixteen First Street.
I would have to get back to you on that one because that was done previous.
Right now, this is an amendment to add five sixteen First Street. So they will all historically, they're, they've been binding. So as the Borough Clerk stated, you would have to get back to him now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
It does apply to five sixteen First.
Okay.
I just wanted to know a little more about the location and why I thought that they would add.
You want to discuss the process too, just so council's aware?
Sure. So if somebody sends me email, they say I want a handicap spot in front of my house. I then emailed the police department and I email Sergeant Del Buno. And I guess they do some type of study. They get back to me and I ask them a series of like ten questions. I'll bring this one up. Give me one second. So I asked them their name, their address. Are you permanently or temporarily disabled, which is in the ordinance? So they have to be one or the other. Do you have a special identification card or plates or placard issued by the Division of Motor Vehicles? Have you been issued a temporary placard by the Denell Police Department? Is your house a one family or two family? Do you have a shared driveway? And explain why you're in need of a handicap parking spot? And are there any types of parking restrictions on your street such as two hour or no parking signs? And then if they want to tell me anything else.
Okay, so then I know that we're not going to discuss the other ones, but then for this one, if this would be in front of a residential?
The residential.
Okay. Another question.
Sure.
So what happens if the owner moves?
What's our compliance review?
It doesn't really state much in the ordinance. It's very short. There's no clause.
We became aware that the reason for issuing it had changed. There's a the process would need to amend the ordinance to win that spot. The procedibility follow up, I don't know the details, but they tend not to. Borough comes aware that 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 in that person go along the way to that location.
So if someone were to come in by the house, another owner, that person would have to appear before council and request for it to be removed or?
I don't know that the person would have to appear before council, but they would contact probably one to let them know that there's a reason for the game cap space longer exists. And then they would do the same process, please, and then report back and that would be presented to council to many ordinance, presumably to eliminate this spot that's so long or meets the criteria of our ordinance for making a game cap spot.
Thank you.
Is that something that we should consider reviewing? In terms of adding some type of review or even like when somebody moves, should there be some type of CO? Construction office aware of these? Like I can only imagine somebody moves in and they might not be aware that they inhabit the world. I just think the town automatically.
We do have the list of new CEOs, so I guess I could check that.
Yeah. And then amend the ordinance to maybe state that upon sale, the construction office has a listing and therefore has to notify the Borough Clerk or something.
Okay.
So it sounds like we've got another amendment. Good, good question, council member.
Is there anything in the ordinance about an expiration after so many years or a reapplication? Because that could be the the catchall for this, that it's valid for two, three, five years. And you have to reapply to extend it.
Right. It's only a small section.
Well, we know we have to add five sixteen at night if council so chooses, but knowing what council and mayor have stated, maybe we can look into how we amend those and then bring back the fully introduced ordinance. Sound good, council? Anything else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Okay, item number six on the agenda are resolutions.
I could.
Okay, our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lauren Stats, will go through the resolutions and give mayor council opportunity to discuss them as we go.
Resolution number three oh five is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number three oh six is to approve the street closing of the three hundred block of Orange Street for a Halloween trunk or treat.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Council President? I advise the association.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't think about that. I have to say.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number three oh seven is to cancel taxes for five thirty two Bound Brook Road.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number three oh eight is to hire Elizabeth De Ba as court administrator for the Denell Municipal Court.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund. Mr. Miller, do you want to speak on this one?
Sure, Mayor. So about a month back, myself, Lauren Stats, Judge House, Bill Zedgian, Court Administrator, Ford Spitzer, and Kimberly, Bill again also a court administrator. We helped interview for the position for a court administrator. And after going through the candidates and whatnot, we came up to, you know, select the candidate to be the court administrator. Came from very knowledgeable interviews. Very knowledgeable of the position and whatnot, so.
And she has experience in another municipal court, correct?
Correct. She works in the ministry, shared course right now. And she has two different, three different boards, but she actually has assisted us here in time when we're missing it, you know, full time administrator.
Okay.
Other questions? Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark. Resolution number three oh nine is a resolution to hire Derek White as Director of Community Development.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
So before I hand it over to Mr. Miller, I can, I can, I will put my endorsement behind Mr. Derek White as a candidate for this position. I mean, we all are aware that we did offer it to another candidate months back. They declined after we made the offer initially and then she accepted and then just, I guess, whatever personal reasons. But Derek was one of the other candidates that interviewed and he interviewed very well. He has experience as Economic Development Committee in South Plainfield where he does sit as a council member. He's looking for a full-time position doing that. And so the community director, development director in Denellen, it's what he's looking to do. Very impressive resume, interviewed very well. He's very eager to help us continue moving the ball forward with our, with our downtown and the town overall. So Mr. White, I think, is a great candidate. And I look forward to if he's given the chance to to work here in Denellen. So Alex, do you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I may have touched on a lot. He's one of the candidates at twenty two. He's hit his, you know, he's related well in his background, you know, pretty strong with the development, you know, development. Look forward to working with him as he improves. I think he's a very good candidate.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Mr. Vandermark. Resolution three ten is authorizing a partial street closing on Whittier Ave.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund. So this is for the annual nightmare on Whittier. And so we review this as a, I guess you could say, a late night block party. And just for safety measures, a resident did speak to me on the street saying that police might not have been aware of it last year, which I don't, I don't know. I'm we'll never miss communications, but Lieutenant, could you just make sure that the police are aware of this one specifically? Halloween.
I'll give you the
Yeah.
I'll give you the signed resolution tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think recently we have sent a, I think people have, she's monitoring.
Just want to make sure communication flows. So thank you, Lieutenant.
Okay. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number three eleven is to approve Denell and American Legion Post one one nine for an instant raffle license.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Me too.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark. Resolution number three twelve is to amend resolution from September sixteenth, two thousand twenty four, number two ninety four, authorizing the Denell and Public Library Parade Event.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund. So this is just a new, a new date, right?
A new date, and I added the time in there.
Okay. And we planned out the appropriate route, right, from the last time we had a discussion on this?
Yes, sir. Myself, library director, she was, and we met last week, we went over the route and whatnot, so I know. Yeah, she called me, she was in touch with me, possibly, but we had a war, so we were worried.
Okay.
I do have questions.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to know for just information purposes, will there be a map, a route map provided to our Denell residents?
Yes.
Okay, also. Okay. And then I also wanted to know if there'll be additional signage provided, like an electronic sign just to let people know in the area that a change in traffic patterns will be happening soon. Maybe Greenbrook has a sign that we can borrow.
I don't know if Greenbrook has a sign. I mean, they have one hand sign on a building. And we had a great meeting.
So do you, so Lieutenant, do you think this would warrant electronic sign to, to, for traffic flow on the or is it small enough of an event? Okay.
We made sure that there were walkers, strictly bike drivers. I don't think somebody ride a bike. How about that is down twenty eight, there was a library. In that thing?
Okay. Just as long as I think there's enough time for, you know, promotion, so residents do know that there's going to be a, a change in traffic pattern for a couple of minutes or twenty, thirty minutes.
So then the hours from eleven to two, is that for the entire event or is that for just the?
That, that, that's also the libraries, also going to be a touch of truck going on back there, it's library. So there'll be different, like vehicles for kids that can see and these people, fire truck. And these, I mean, so.
All right, that was, I guess that was the confusion on my part because I didn't know if they were going to just be riding.
Oh, no.
Maybe we need to warn people. All right. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, anything else to add from library?
No.
Okay. Okay, good. Okay, cool.
Okay. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Okay, item number seven on the agenda is council reports. Council President Albertson, anything to report this evening?
Yes, the Friends of the Denell Public Library. They have one more open air market this season. It's November third and it's a great time to start your holiday shopping. The market is at Washington Memorial Park from eleven AM to three PM. Our annual bags and bling sale is November tenth at the library. This year we have an exclusive sip and shop event on Saturday, November ninth from six thirty PM to eight PM. Five dollar admission includes mocktails and cheese and crackers, and you get to be the first ones to shop. Contact the Friends for reservation or catch us online on Facebook. American Legion Post one nineteen has car shows on Wednesday, October twenty third and October thirtieth. Their very special trunk retreat. Bring the family and have a fun evening. Car shows start at five PM. Our bingo is October twenty eighth, opens at five PM. Bingo starts at six PM. Refreshments available for purchase at each of these events. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rios?
Yes. It's lost it. Okay, there it is. Denell and Recreation Department, Denell's annual Halloween Parade is happening this Sunday, October twenty seventh with a brand new route. Registration starts at twelve PM in the library parking lot and the parade will begin at one PM marching to Washington Park. In addition, Denell is celebrating its birthday with Founder's Day on the same day as Washington Park from twelve to five PM. Hosted by Denell and Recreation, Founder's Day will celebrate the town's rich history and bring the community together. Enjoy local vendors, live performances, and fun activities that highlight the spirit of our town. Interested in participating as a vendor or a performer? Contact Recreation Program Coordinator Kelly Cedar at kcedar@denellandborough.com. Come join us in a fun-filled Sunday fun day. The Denell, that was a mouthful. This, the Denell Public Library will be hosting its first bike parade on November second, starting at I E F Greenbrook Elementary School and ending at the library, followed by, following the parade, there will be a touch of truck event to celebrate the launch of its reciprocal borrowing privileges between Somerset County and Middlesex County. The event begins at eleven AM in Greenbrook and registration is required. Everyone is welcome to join and is in this in this exciting library kickoff. Please contact the General Public Library for more information. The Board of Education held their meeting on October fifteenth, which included a self-assessment presentation for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. They also reviewed a list of district-wide training and programs currently being attended, including a, a incident collection of violence, violence, vandalism, weapons, substance, abuse, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Our related information is available online at denellandschools.com. Next meeting will be November nineteenth. Remember to volunteer. Your support is crucial to the success of many programs and without it, some may not be able to move forward. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member. Councilmember Vandermark, welcome back. Anything to report?
It's good to be back. As far as the police department goes, they're still in the still looking for applicants to fill that for the job, police officer. You can go on the website. Had to fly there. And that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you, councilman. Councilmember Lance?
Yes, from Buildings and Grounds, there's some updates on the biking security claw box system at the entrance to the police lobby and Chambers Court. That's still under development. Currently, the contractor has ordered the necessary equipment and anticipates beginning work around November fourth with the project expected to last three days. There are several updates regarding the TK one IT service in Borough Hall. The firewall has been upgraded with the old configuration having been modified and a new system now installed and successfully tested. TK one is also collaborating with a phone vendor to establish new phone installations and improve communication with other buildings. An additional setup was done in the tax office for our newest employee. And extensive upgrades have been done, I'm sorry, have been made to the telecommunications within the police department. TK one IT services have sourced and replaced faulty hard drives on the police video server and upgraded the firewall. The previous configurations have been revised and reconnected to Somerset for proper CAD connection. New workstations have been established in the communication area. While the power supply has been replaced, the motherboard appears to be malfunctioning. An external hard drive has been purchased and set up for video storage and the police department server is dealing with limited space and will need additional drives. Moreover, the old server was never completely retired, requiring a migration to transfer data, user rights, and other network tools. As for the Columbia Park camera system, the school district is upgrading that system which they've already started installing. As in the past, the borough will collaborate with the district under a shared services agreement to ensure video access to the park. And that's all for me.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like a lot. Councilmember Sigmund?
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to thank everyone for their hard work in making the Haunted Trail a smashing success this year. With more than seventy-five volunteers planning, building, and manning the exhibits, we were able to raise over twenty-two thousand dollars and scare more than eighteen hundred participants. I also want to thank the handful of volunteers who came in on Sunday and earlier today on Monday to break down and transport the exhibits back to storage. If you're interested in being a part of the fun next year, please reach out for more information. And remember, like I say, for coaching, you don't have to be a great athlete to be a great role model. You don't have to be a real zombie to chase screaming adults around at night. And that is all for me.
Thank you, councilman, and great work on the Haunted Trail to you and the entire Mar House Committee and everybody involved. It was a a very frightful evening. It was fun.
And also thank you for leading some groups.
Well, my pleasure. I enjoyed it. Councilmember Scott?
A pretty big report for Public Works. That's good. They're out there working. They completed weekly lawn maintenance and landscape at the Borough Parks and Properties. Continue the trash trap removal of the debris. Watered the new daily watering of the new downtown trees. Continue brickwork around the trees, the new trees. Planted four new trees at Third and Mountain View. And distribution of leaf bags and weekly curbside pickup of leaf bags. Just a reminder, residents can pick up one twenty-five count pack for each household. Leaf bag pickup throughout the borough continues and it's a reminder the crew will be picking up leaf bags through the end of the year. On maintenance side, repairs to police vehicles five oh nine, five oh six, servicing five oh seven, repairs to the front suspension and full preventive maintenance. Diagnosed police vehicle five oh nine for a lifter tick. Repaired an airbag malfunction on five oh seven. Service truck two for the upcoming plowing and leaf season. Fabricate and wire emergency light beacon for the leaf vacuum attachment to aid the worker safety when on the road for cleanup jobs. Service truck thirty-three and fabricated, which actually sounds like a lot of work, fabricated hydraulic dump body pump mount as the old one rusted off, so. As the old one rusted off, so. Sounds like a lot of welding. Uh, repaired faulty wiring in the garbage truck for the blower motor. Replace the rear hydraulic hose for the packer, curl and lift pistons. And convert from rotten hopper lift lines to hydraulic. And repair wiring and the inoperative lighting in the rear of the truck. Lot of, lot of maintenance work going on.
Sounds like they work good, they good job, guys.
That's all I have.
So you got, okay. Um, so for my report, I just want to say, I, um, this weekend, I want, I. Want to extend congratulations to the Denell Knights of Columbus Council twenty-five forty-four. Uh, they just celebrated their one-hundredth anniversary yesterday. And a congratulations to Sir Knight Thomas E. Sheenan, who was honored for his seventy-first year of membership with the organization, so congratulations. Um, they held a special lunch on yesterday to mark the occasion, and I just want to extend thanks to Councilwoman Chrisall Itis Lance. Who attended on my behalf to present a proclamation to Thomas Sheenan and a plaque to the Knights. To commemorate these incredible milestones, so again, congratulations both to the Knights of Columbus, a great organization in our town. And to, uh, Thomas Sheenan for his seventy-first year with the organization, so, great stuff. Uh, Smart Growth Award, I just want to say we're, uh, I'm happy to share that the Nell at the Denellin Station is a winner of the two thousand twenty-four. New Jersey Future Growth Award, which honors development projects across the state and recognizes the best in building with our environment and communities. In mind. Uh, the award will be presented tomorrow evening at the Smart Growth Awards Event at the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center and. Alex and myself will go and represent the town. Election Day is coming up, we're two weeks as of tomorrow, on Tuesday, November fifth. Uh, we have important information, voting information on our website, Denellin-nj.gov backslash elections. Including a map to determine which voting district you live in, which determines your polling, uh, location is. Whether it's at Lincoln Middle School or Denellin Senior Center, for the record here, districts one, three, four. Six are at Lincoln Middle School and districts two, five are at the Denellin, uh, Senior Center in Columbia Park. Um, so, I hope you're registered to vote. Um, oh, also for anyone who received a mail-in ballot, we have a secure mail-in, uh, ballot drop box. Located at the Denellin Public Library and that's one hundred New Market Road, right? Um, and it is secure and it is locked and it is videoed twenty-four seven. Um, and so if you're registered to vote, be sure to get out to the polls and have your voice heard. Um, Klein Place, the NJ DOT Project, uh, it's near completion. Uh, street striping was completed this past week and CME, our engineer, has provided a punch list for the contractor. Um, some notable improvements on Klein include removal and replacement of sewer main from Kennedy Court to West Fourth Street. Newly installed stormwater system, including a sun pump tie-in to the stormwater system, including eleven new, uh, catch basins. New concrete sidewalk for Klein Place entrance into Columbia Park with an ADA compliant ramp. Uh, enhanced striping, including rumble strip, sharrows and twenty-five mile per hour painted on the street. Three new trees and eight new shrubs. Uh, no parking area at the end of Klein, uh, near the Columbia Park entrance, so, uh, a very nice job. And we're happy the project is coming to conclusion, so then we can get our grant dollars back and pay down that debt service. Uh, Middlesex County Pulaski Street Culvert Project, it's now been completed, thank God, after how many years, two to three? Almost three, it was a long time. Um, the culvert is more than double the size of our older culvert, I should say, not ours, the county's culvert. Uh, which will help with water flow through the area, uh, the project is. Also includes new curbing sidewalk and eight new catch basins, and we also, they also updated the siphon over there, right?
They removed the siphon.
Okay. I'm just gonna edit my notes to make sure we, we say it's the counties, not ours. Thank you. Uh, Penfield Place and Maple Lab, New Jersey American Water Project, today our contractor guarding state paving. Uh, was, is expected to complete some road repairs prior to New Jersey American Water Milling and paving, uh, the two hundred block of Penfield and Maple Avenue. And a small section of Oak Parkway, uh, which is expected to take place from October twenty-eighth to October thirtieth, weather permitting, I hope weather is. Good because Halloween's right there. Uh, downtown trees from Madison to the two hundred block of North Ave, uh, five more trees will be planted this week in various locations between Washington Ave and Madison Ave. Uh, Public Works has been working on brick repairs as Councilmember, uh, noted near the trees and installation of mulch. Um, those trees that are being installed this week, they're not the smaller dogwoods, right, they're the, okay, good, um, thank you. Uh, our engineers report, uh, Denell Downtown Wayfinding signage, preliminary plans have been prepared. And a meeting is being scheduled to Denell Downtown Management Organization to review said plans. Lincoln Avenue, the final reimbursement figures are under review by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Our engineer anticipates the borough will ultimately receive the remaining twenty-five percent of the grant that is owed to us. Final reimbursements estimated to be around three hundred thousand, which will be nice because we'll go to pay down our debt services on that project. Washington Avenue Street Lighting, uh, the NJ DOT has authorized the bidding of the project, bid schedule is to be developed. Uh, Second Street Phase One, the NJ DOT has authorized the bidding of the project, bid is scheduled to be developed. A meeting is being scheduled with the Mayor's Traffic and Pedestrian Task Force, right? Because I report on this every week. Okay, good. Um. Railroad Culvert, uh, CME is coordinating a meeting with the I Bank to discuss status and requested a call for a meeting with the Army Corps. Of Engineers to discuss the status of the Greenbrook Project, which will impact, generally speaking, that project, so. Um, some movement. Uh, Strip Joint, or commonly known as six thirty, now known as six thirty-five Bound Brook Road. Uh, the demolition contract will be bid upon completion of the building assessment, so they're working on that. Um. Based upon some discussions with our engineers on recent projects meeting, they have prepared and submitted the following, an update budget letter for Second Street Phase Two. A proposal for the Mar House Assessment, so that'll be coming up for our review. Um, they're also preparing the following, a budget letter for the RRFB installations at New Market Road and Grove Street and South Washington Avenue and Orange Street. That's part of the SRT Grant, a hundred and seventy thousand we got, I think, last year. Uh, budget letter for the Streetscape Lighting on North Avenue from Madison Avenue to the Middlesex Borough, which is the Transit Village Grant we got this past year. A proposal for the RRFP installations at Madison Avenue and First Street, Madison Avenue, Denellin Avenue, Washington Avenue and First Street and Denellin at. Washington Avenue and Denellin Avenue, which we funded through capital this year. Uh, we also received a response from NJ DOT regarding additional ADA locations and the inclusion of RFPBs at the NJ DOT ADA. Contract that was received this week and is under review by our engineers. Uh, just to reiterate, that project is being done by the state in the downtown to update all the ADA compliant ramps. We asked that they, uh, take into consideration the rapid beacon lights that we were able to negotiate in our redevelopment agreements. And to install them all at the same time, so they basically don't tear it up one time, fix it and then tear it up again. Um, hopefully. They follow through, s- smart thing to do. Um, yeah, that state government for you. Uh, CME continues to perform weekly checks of all ongoing private projects per the borough's request, so. That's it for my report. Department heads. Let's start up on the dais.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. Yes, uh, so, the update on that is, is they're gonna complete it? Uh, was that stalled due to P C and G? Or due to the, the telephone poles? Yeah, so they have to work on how they're gonna, they have to basically put out forward an application, how they're gonna do the remainder of it, because it's a certain. Distance between that and the wire. Um, and P C and G, uh, apparently this was not part of the process, is now coming down very hard on all towns that are doing the work. Um, so they have to go through the process of showing how they're gonna do it safely, because. They're concerned against somebody's gonna reach out and touch a wire twenty feet away, so. But work continues onsite, I can clearly see.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, of course. Anything else? Okay, department heads, let's start up on the dais, legal?
No report, thank you.
Okay, Clark?
Um, just a reminder that, uh, sample ballots will be mailed out on October twenty-third, your sample ballot will state your district and polling registration in the front. You ready to talk about districts and spots to vote? Um, early voting is available from October twenty-sixth through November third at select locations. The early voting location that is closest to Denellin is at the JFK Public Library at five hundred Close Lane at the Scataway. And also the drop box at the library will be locked on election night at eight PM, which is also the same time as the closing polls.
Yeah, and just so people are aware too, in terms of how mail-in ballots work, when they get mailed, well, get put at the drop box. When they are picked up by the county, um, a Republican and a Democrat and or independent, and basically it's not two people of the same party. Are there to pick it up together, um, same thing with when it's finally locked at eight PM, it's both a Republican and a Democrat or an independent. So this way it is, it's, it's, you're getting, what would you call it? There, yeah, um, but I'm saying two eyes, four eyes. So, sorry, uh, so it is, it is secure, um, just so everybody is aware. Um, okay, uh. Oh, we am.
Yes, it's a few things, um, we have supported the Murrell House Haunted Trail with, uh. Four CERT members, OER members, uh, doing, uh, what I call pedestrian vehicular safety. And situational awareness within the park. For, for both, uh, Friday and Saturday. We participated in Harvest Fest, uh, distributing materials to the residents and also providing what we call. Go kits or bags for the kids who participated in a beam tossing, uh, game. So that was a way to kind of connect the parents with the kids. Uh, Saturday coming up on the twenty-second, no, twenty-six, I'm sorry, uh, we have our, uh. Another part of our series, Safety Saturdays, and our Safety Saturdays presentation usually runs about an hour. Is, this is, this is gonna be, uh, school safety, kids going back to school. So that will be presented at the, uh, library, uh, Saturday. And the last thing is that a couple of members of the, our team will be participating in, uh, the annual paradigm. Hazardous pipe. Um. Leaks training, um, in Somerset tomorrow. So we go there every year and they do like a little bit of like a tabletop exercise in terms of how you detect hazardous. Leaks, gas leaks and the pipe system in New Jersey.
Okay, thank you, Homer. Um, really quick, you brought, you brought up Harvest Fest, did, did we bring that up? We didn't have a council meeting after that, right? So anyway, Harvest Fest could, again, to the DDMO, congratulations, that was a great event, you did a beautiful job as always, so. Good work by everybody and all the volunteers that put their sweat equity and time into it, so, uh, and all the performers that showed up too. Um, I will note, note for the record too, November second at nine thirty AM, walk and talk with the mayor. It will be the last one for the year, so, um, if you have any questions that you've been itching to ask. You know, outside of emailing or calling me, um, show up, take a walk with me, burn some calories, get your steps in, okay? IT?
No report.
Okay. Administration? All right, ladies. Police? No, anything from, uh, Rescue Squad?
Yes. Um, the Denell Rescue Squad has, in the last two months, brought in five new members.
Good work.
Red cadet members, uh, which is under eighteen, and two adults. Now, currently the two, two of the cadet members are enrolled in the EMT class. And the two adults, uh, will be. Joining into EMT class, uh, for the spring semester. Uh, we also have three new adult applicants that we are currently processing. At this point, the Rescue Squad, uh, is at its capacity for cadet members, so we'll not be accepting any, any underage. We've been participating, uh, in various township events, the football games. Been able to have a presence of the squad at each one of the football games. Uh, at this point, we have not received any communication on playoff schedules yet, so. Rec Department gets anything on that, that'll be helpful.
We don't, uh, can reach out to them, enjoy.
Okay. Uh, we participated in the haunted trail. On a, on a few, on a, on a, uh, semi, there is known as the haunted trail, uh, last night. Not, not on one would call the hanging of the park. Which turned out to just be a declaration.
Still staring at the trail was done.
Yeah, that's, uh, I can see, looking at night now, that could be a concern.
And. Another note, I hate the, hate for yourself, um, but. Quite some time ago, the town council approved, uh, the concept on our Rescue Squad redevelopment. Uh, we went to go to the planning board and they told us that we gotta come back to you to get that done again. So, sort of confused about that, really like to go forward and plan through the plan.
Well, yes, I think we would all like for you to do that, but in terms of procedure. A conceptual rendering is not the same thing as a site, so procedurally, we approved your site plan and a redevelopment agreement to go along with it. What comes now is a site plan. For us to say, okay, that, we feel that meets our zoning, so now we can then move it to planning board, do their full. Assessment and review of the project. But that's, that's the proper procedure.
Oh.
Yeah. It should be outlined in the redevelopment agreement, if it's not, just.
Really.
Reach out to Alex. Okay, it should be part of the schedule that was agreed upon, but what's, uh, well, look, Sharon's in tomorrow, so let's, uh. We need to give you a call so we can just make sure we're all on the same page and there's no confusion, we don't want you to, we want this to be as smooth sailing as possible. That is legally and ethically allowed to be done. So.
And, uh, I'd like to thank you guys for the. One thing we were gonna ask, if I was in, before going into six thirty-five, I'll report, but, uh, thank you.
It's, uh, moving along, but sometimes when you deal with the DEP, it's just, it's, uh, a snail's case, so, we're moving along. Okay, we appreciate your patience, but I, I know you guys are working very well together on, operating side by side, so.
We're trying to get out of it.
We understand, right, so. But thank you for your patience. Okay, no other comments or anything from council regarding anything, without hearing any, we'll open. Uh, the meeting to item number nine on the agenda, which is public comments, we'll start with those in chambers first. Just so there's no crossover, so anybody in chambers, if you have any comments or questions for mayor and council, please state your name and address, we're all ears. Okay, anybody online, if you have any comments or questions for mayor and council, please state your name and address and we're, we're listening. Okay, I'll just blanket, generally speaking, if anybody has any comments or questions for the mayor and council, please state your name and address. Without hearing any, we'll close that portion of the meeting, uh, number ten on the, uh, agenda is adjournment, can I have a motion in second on resolution? Three thirteen, a resolution of adjournment.
Move it, Sigmund?
Second, Mr. Vandermark. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, everyone, be well, stay safe and we'll see you on November.